So that now she can control the mute on their phone because of that. Unmute it, but we granted unmute it again if we get feedback.
It's just been a goddamn fly.
Fully electric vehicle, 500 for a used plug-in hybrid and 1,000 for a used EV. Charging equipment, up to $1,000 for residential Level 2 chargers. Again, never to exceed the cost of one of those installations, but it should cover a significant portion of them. Again, we really want to get these out there in the community so that we're getting experience, our customers getting experience and we're supporting it. $3,000 to purchase a commercial Level 2. We've partnered with several of the multi-factory developments, Panema Mills, Westledge, with the others you're building where Peachtree used to be, to get these charging stations installed at the time of construction, which is the most cost-effective. And it works as a win-win. I mean, for us, we get the infrastructure out there. For them, they're able to meet, you know, the increasing need from their customer base. And $4,000 for down in the Moreagan Parkin duct, for example. There's one of these commercial use Level 2 charger that is available for public charging. So these are all on a network and people can come and plug in to the extent that they're billed.
Yes, the meetings associated with the charging stations, nothing significant, no?
Yeah, well Bill, there's electronics in there and our early adopted chargers, we've had a lot of issues with the electronics failing and things. But it's usually you call somebody up, they come down, they replace the board, they replace the electronics. It's not something that our mechanic's going in and fixes.
Yeah, Chris makes a good point.
Just as an aside, one of the things Henry Resnick has talked about multiple times is the desirability of having a truck recharging station at Business Park Nora. I don't know what's involved in that, but I suspect they require a whole lot more charging.
It's interesting you bring that up because they talked about that up at NAPR. And what we heard up there, this is just a different side of the coin, but what we heard up there is that they figure that traditional electric charging with new ion batteries, et cetera, could get you about half the transportation fee. The medium and heavy-duty trucks, this is where, further out there with the hydrogen and things like that, are technology that are being looked at because the sheer amount of energy that you need to store to power these large trucks. So what we can do as part of VPN, and we're also looking at doing sooner than that on some other properties in town, is what we call a level three charger. So this is a 480 volt, a lot of times that's been associated with Tesla. But the reality is, is if you get higher capacity batteries and, you know, it's how much temperature you can put in, reduces the amount of time in charging. So, you know, off the top of my head, I think those stations could potentially be compatible should, you know, trucks and things like that ultimately get over to this technology. So again, we're all ears for any potential opportunity to be in there to support this.
Yeah, large trucks, it's not going to be driven on the size of the battery, it's going to be driven on the weight of the battery. And when you put a very large, heavy battery in a truck, it reduces the payload. You can only have so many, you know, so many tons on a road or bridge. And it's the payload that you reduce that makes it not economical. So when they say Amazon, big hydrogen powered truck is going to drive to Norwich and then pull into a distribution center and all your vans and small box trucks, which could be all 100% electric, then go out and deliver to the last mile. So big trucks to get here, small trucks, electric to go from there.
All right, great. All right, moving over to the heat pumps. Again, another huge area of potential electrification. And again, you have the program goals, you know, increasing revenue. We've, so far, we've really targeted this to customers who do not have natural gas for heating. So then that way, that brings a benefit to the city in the fact that it's additional revenue for the utility, which means an increased city payment and, you know, a saving for the customer as well over traditional propane and oil, for instance. If you're on natural gas, it is comparable because of the efficiencies of the natural gas and whatnot. So we're not recommending anyone that participated in our gas expansion program now running out and getting a heat pump unless you need central air or something along those lines. In this case, that would be an advantage. The other big piece of this is the reduction in the carbon emission. Same thing again, you're going to need the heating, home heating in order to reach those costs. A lot of oil out there still, we only bring gas to approximately half of our electric customer base. So this is something that we can offer to the other half, any customer, but the other half as well. We've got 180 inquiries to date, 103 projects in progress and 32 installations completed. So again, this is something where Chris and his team doing marketing, Mary Lou and Devin have been doing heavy lifting on the program and its program itself. My experience to date with these types of programs is there's a level of momentum associated with them. As the word of mouth begins to spread, as we get the opportunity for people to learn more about this, we get past COVID, we can start doing some public events again, things like that. That were very successful with gas expansion, we're really looking at this taking off. And it positions our, the strategic plan of our efficiency programs to align with that so that we'll make sure that we have the funding for it. Just to reiterate, $2,400 a ton for electric heat pumps. So an average home is somewhere between two and three tons. About 60% of the installed cost would be covered by a renewable. So that's a very significant incentive. This is double what we were offering previously, but again, the value of this across the board can't be understated. So that's why the levels are where they are at. $2,000 for advanced controls. Again, this makes sure that the hot heat pump is prioritized, that the main source of heat for the home, sure that the other source is available to maximize the savings for the customer. And then $1,100 for a heat pump water heater. This thing's really cool. It acts as a dehumidifier for your basement as well as heating your water. So very, very cool technology there. And again, that would almost cover the cost of one of those units. And we always, we call them optional energy audits because we don't want someone who may not want an energy audit. We do still do our home energy savings program, go to a person's home, do weatherization, things along those lines, light bulbs if they still don't have them, things like that. But again, it's an option, it's not a requirement. Okay, next steps, big ones at the top, we've already talked about that today. Pursue federal and state funding wherever possible. That's going to be a big piece of really getting the charging infrastructure up in the LA. Always been a cornerstone of our program, leveraging dollars from out there, the community wherever we possibly can. Continue to grow the electrification program, so again, increasing customer awareness through media campaigns, et cetera. And we're dynamic, this is one of the beautiful things about it being a municipal utility. We can, if we see something out there that might be an acceptable tweak to our program, we're going to let you guys know and we're able to adjust to that. We're going to expand EV charging, this is what you were talking about, the level three DC fast charger. Time for us to get one of those out there so that we can get an experience as well as providing that resource. We're going to evaluate and expand our fleet wherever it's practical. And just, you know, point to note, we'll continue to watch on the distribution system. If you had a road with, you know, eight neighbors decided to order one of the new Lightnings and every single one of them charged at the same time, that could potentially have a strain on the infrastructure. We're just making sure that we're looking ahead and making sure that we're doing what we need to do to meet that. And that's what I have.
You know, I've heard on the YCH, advertising R&amp;W, they mentioned oil and utilities. What was the relationship?
So again, R&amp;W has focused a lot of their time and energy in this market. So we'll work with any contractor, doesn't matter one way or another, we don't favor one over another, for sure. But if, just like any of the lenders that we work with, same type of thing, if they'd like to mention the value of our program, we not, you know, we made sure, actually through the state, through the Green Bank, there's a list of all the contractors that could potentially participate through their process. So it's just, it's kind of a joint media. Yep, absolutely.
But if the installer is promoting these systems, then that's a win-win. So they can grow our gas expansion and they can grow our chip program, then it's a huge win. And, you know, you know, you go and you say, hey, my boiler just broke. And your guy who you'd normally call a fixture boiler says, hey, I got another option. That's, that's going to work.
Okay, you want to provide a cannabis?
Yep, so our next topic is one that is a really exciting opportunity. It's a very controversial opportunity as well. So it's marijuana cultivation and manufacturing. So we're not talking about retail shops, we're talking about where they manufacture. And this is a very great opportunity to grow, so definitely.
All right, successfully shared two documents, great. All right, so just want to point out, Mary Lou Richardson runs our program office and as well as Devin Schleicher is a consultant for us, both instrumental in putting this information together. This is something where we see a tremendous potential opportunity for load growth. Obviously, it's a top-of-mind issue in many conversations now. So what we really wanted to do in Krista's office was taking a look at the status of growing cannabis and what that means from, strictly from an electric utility point of view. So just to review where we're at now, on July 1st of this year, Connecticut became the 19th state to legalize adult recreational use of cannabis. There will be a range of licenses, we went to an event that was put on the other morning by the chamber. Still, I think some things to be worked out, probably correct the best way to put it. That's exactly how those licenses are going to flow and when. But somewhere in the next eight to 12 months, you know, the growers are going to be looking for sites to begin their operation. So research and due diligence, so one of the things, and again, we just started on this very recently, looking at other companies, utility companies who already have grow operations in place and in operation. So we can get real-time data from, obviously Massachusetts is the place to look as it's been legal there for some time. And we work with a sister utility in Massachusetts, found that they have an operation existing up and running and that's them about half a million dollars a year. That would be at the equivalent to our economic development rate. So as I go through this, I'm going to talk about that because Steve and his team presented on that key, key point into bringing new businesses in. And that would ramp up about 60,000 in annual revenue for the utility and 60,000 in city payment. If we were to have an equivalent operation like that here in Oregon. So definite, definite value there. And on the coming slides, we'll talk a little bit about how that compares to some other industries that we currently have and that we're talking about.
So Jeff's talking about electric only. And when we did our discussions with the Massachusetts companies, there are gas moratoriums where they can't grow their gas business. So these companies ask for natural gas and electricity, they were only able to provide the electricity. So there is additional loading for natural gas for heating and for carbon dioxide generation that may be significant as well. We don't have that from the Massachusetts companies.
Okay, so again, this is going to be an ongoing thing. So the idea today was really to give you an idea of where we're at and where we started. But we're going to continue to reach out to other communities, gather more data points and refine exactly what this means to NPU. That obviously includes discussions internally as well as with Kevin and NCDC being a key part of this and the city as well.
Well, where does everyone, I mean, it is controversial, you're right. I presume NCDC and NPU want to go ahead with this.
Absolutely.
I certainly support it.
Yeah, but right now, before an election is probably not the best time to be promoting the use of this because it's very polarizing, so.
I mean, there was a proposal, which I guess turned out to not be very realistic, but of a group out of Toronto that wanted to convert the old Light Lear plant into a marijuana growing facility. And again, I think they were, they were just, I don't think they had a lot of substance, but the number was spectacular.
Yeah, and that's what Jeff's going to show you right now.
So, no, it's great, you did great segues for me about it. So one of the things that I found particularly interesting was to look at this on an energy density basis. So basically, we have so many square feet, we're trying to increase the number of square feet in the community. And how does this back up relative to other potential businesses in electric revenue? And then subsequently, you know, city payment as well as a tax base for the city. So if you look at a warehouse, and these are, because of the public session, I removed the names, but these are actual businesses in Norwich. So if you look at a warehousing type facility, it's roughly 50 cents a square foot annual electric revenue. Again, as Chris mentioned, I took it out, just focus this on electric for the purposes of this conversation. So warehousing, I think logically, not the first place that we want to look from a revenue point of view. Very large industrial manufacturer, again, I think we can figure out who these customers are. That was maybe a customer that's not with us anymore. That was almost $11 a square foot. So that was excellent term in energy, you know, the amount of real estate that it consumed, produced, to consume that much energy was very advantageous. If you look at, say, you know, a large laundry facility, that's a little less than $3 a square foot. A little lower than I expected it to be. Mid-sized manufacturer, maybe a successful manufacturer in our current business park, a little more than $4 a square foot. Computer processing facility, this was the highest energy density, not surprising, of any of the uses that we currently have in the community. That was almost $15 a square foot. Then we look at the Massachusetts grow facility that we use as our baseline, the existing one based on our rates, current rates at the economic development rate. In other words, if they recommend us a new customer next month, was about just north of $12 a square foot. And then if you looked at it with our specific, I'm sorry, that was their cost. Our specific cost was between 12.4, that would be at the first step of the economic development rate, up to $14 a square foot once they went through that five-year escalation to our standard EP customer rate, apologize for confusing those two. So to me, this is really the meat of the analysis on this slide and showing why, from electric utility point of view and from a city point of view when it comes to revenue, there's a lot of value here. Putting the political aspect of it aside.
And we have, as I understand the law, distressed communities are targeted for this sort of thing. So that we're not competing with 169 cities in town. But just in terms of our rates or it just be, yeah. So that's another competitive point. But I mean, like for example, Wallingford has low electric rates, but my guess is that they're not a distressed community so they wouldn't be at the front of the line to get a facility like this. But I mean, you mentioned the large industrial manufacturing facility. Would marijuana growers actually want a facility that big?
Potential, okay, yeah. Now, there's multiple ways that they do their business. One can be one large facility for one grower. They can also co-op, much like that Canadian firm was talking about doing, where they create the infrastructure and then they lease out pieces of their factory for them. And they can also grow these vertically as well as horizontally. Devin, you're kind of an expert in this, you want to kind of give an overview?
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're saying is what's going to happen. I would suggest, if you're interested in licensing, how it's going to happen, that's like the most critical thing to think about. This is the next thing to fall on that's going to happen. 50% of the licenses are going to have to go to what they call social equity here in Connecticut, social equity partisan. We, as in Norwich, is already defined as a distressed community, so we got that. Secondly, finding a person that is going to be able to own 51% of that business, they have to own 51%. So, you know, a traditional cultivation facility can be three to four million dollars off of that in order to build this facility. You're going to want to, if you're going to want, if you want with the licenses, they're going to have to start on a much smaller, on a micro scale and then grow out. So sharing facilities, let's say such as a facility that can accommodate that, they can share different pieces similar to, you know, a co-op sort of, you know, while they're doing the micro growing, growing organic. And there's a lot of strategy behind this also, the whole money aspect of this industry, because it's difficult. So they really have to self-roll and self-put money, you can't really go out and borrow like tradition. So if they start small, they reroll that money back into itself, it will grow, you know, those micro cultivators will grow and grow and grow. So it can get a different license that may be on a different scale. So like I said, 51% of the licenses that are going to go out have to go to social equity, to the social equity person. And that social equity person has also 51% of the business. So they're going to have small capital at the beginning in order to get going. And a shared facility like that, let's say a shared facility with multiple micro cultivators, is probably a good thought process about how to kind of help them all develop.
So what's a social equity person?
Yeah, so, and I'm unsure if the minority section has been defined. It has not been defined yet, I don't believe so. It was mostly defined within the majority, or so.
Communities that are disproportionately impacted by drugs and the, you know, the scope of effect of.
Yeah, so there's, this is a couple of locations and a person. So location, we have that prior to all. The person, the definition of what a minority is, I don't believe is yet to be defined yet. I checked a week ago and we're kind of waiting on that. But they also can make more than 200% of the spending of income in space unless they can't make more than 200 grand a year. So they're going to be relatively, you know, smaller person and grow off. These are, you know, this is a profile of the person, right? And this is the final thing, what a social equity license is going to be. And all the cannabis licenses, 51% of them are going to be social equity.
So there's people in an actual place that happens.
Right, the minority section. Nor is it defined, the next question is, who's that person in the community that's that person, and how will their facility grow up?
And I mean, having been on the time board for a while, I know that we not only could not lend to any marijuana business, including a retail store that was in the area, we actually had to send into the federal government, anytime they cast a check or anything, that they were a suspicious, suspicious business, suspicious business practice.
You're going to find this, this is either going to be private capital, this is going to be capital, or state chartered, state chartered credit union. Those are the two folks, and it's a gun for the industry.
And the reason banks want to do it is that they're governed by the FDIC.
Right.
And federal government still has marijuana illegal.
Right, so anybody outside of the FDIC insurance, state chartered banks, charter or credit union wouldn't be one of those, they're actually not, but our, like American Credit, Federal, American Field, Federal Credit Union, there was a crap of these old credit union, incidentally, state charter bank, sometimes they insure, so, you know, that's a place to take a look at.
Actually, I don't think, it's a management decision at banks, because I believe Eastern has done some lending to marijuana-related entities.
Yeah, it depends on the restaurants.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so, it comes down to how they can go with restaurants, like, you know, that's really what it comes down to, a lot of private capital. And what I see is what people get on the ground is really the self-financing person through friends and, you know, that's how they're going to be all grounded, otherwise they're going to be a large grow-up from some other state, only state operator of the company, you know, so.
And I guess, what is sort of the long-term prospects here? I mean, it's being legalized state by state by state, and there's sort of incentives, or maybe restrictions, I don't know. You have to grow it in state, but at some point, that's going to go away, it's going to be legalized federally.
Yeah.
There's going to be some multi-million square foot marijuana facility in South Carolina or something.
The end has a voice of Canada.
That's right.
And we just kind of, Canada's word for, what's going to happen, at least in my mind, what's, how's this all going to happen, they're going to have, you know, we're, we are now 18th or 19th, you know, in the 19th in the state lineup, right, of people, okay? Now, we have all these other states that are going to fall after us. The question is, what is the time mark? Is it 10 years? Is it 20 years? And at that point in time, once it gets to majority, does it flop over that point in time? Because I can tell you, none of these grow facilities will, highly unlikely that they will be here. They will all disappear, and they will all roll to the south, into California. Because our rate rates are just too high. And it's okay, but when you grow at a time, it depends on the cost of what the cost to grow indoors. But, that being said, there still will be the craft brewer, okay, of cannabis, right? So, they're not all going to go away, but a lot of them will roll, probably, they will still be at that point in time, or re-bought out, or whatever, you know, and how does this happen over the years, you know, if you use alcohol as a, you know, a parallel of that, you know? But, that's probably what's going to happen on the time mark. The question is, what is the time mark? And so, it's going to be, it's going to be by 10 years, 20 years, I don't know, you know, so, what one wants to make sure is, they get the return on investment prior to when cannabis is, right?
So, the point is that you get involved early, not later.
Yeah, but also, if there's going to be some sort of assistance to these companies, you have to decide how quickly you can advertise that assistance before they take off.
Right, and maybe, maybe it's 40 years, maybe it's 50, I don't know, I haven't plotted the reasons, you know, but I know that it's about 30 something percent of the states right that we're at now, right? And so, if we look at that, if they were to, where are the tipping point when the Fed say, all right, everybody's going to do it now, let's go, you know. All right, so, anyway, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's, so, we talked a little bit about potential problems, and you brought up one that there had been a discussion on, you know, some time ago, in the business park. But if you look at, you know, 40, Wisconsin, it grew over 200,000 square feet, it'd be $2.5 million a year in revenue, if you were to have one level of a grow operation. I agree with what Devin's saying, and that's the fact that I don't think it's going to start there, but it illustrates the potential of this industry. And of course, business park north, maybe, you mentioned 34, again, I think something on that scale, based on what Devin's saying, may not be certainly immediate, but just, you know, there are definitely sites available, will current and potential, and this is a good opportunity for that. So, as far as next steps, again, we're going to continue to gather, analyze, and report on data regarding utility revenue and existing grow operations. The goal is to work closely with NCDC and the city on potential citing the facility, being sensitive to the political side of things, you know, evaluate the value for everyone involved, and hopefully, you know, we can get some momentum to be part of this process early, as Mary Lou said, very important. And first and foremost, on the technical side, we'll be prepared to provide whatever infrastructure and support necessary to make sure this business can flourish here if possible.
Is there anything happening, like at NCDC or the city, or, I mean, other than gee, we have this great opportunity here, isn't this kind of nice? I mean, is there any recruitment going on, or any?
So, we're not there yet. I've had really good discussions with Kevin Brown and Deanna Rhodes, two of the key people to make it happen, but we've got to get the political entities behind this, and everyone behind this, to really be an attractive site, and that may not be advantageous until last November.
You know, I had an idea, like, you know, what kind of building, I'm looking forward to, do you build a new building, or is it more economical, just a retrofitted existing building? I mean, I don't see, if the horizon is wider than it is, or in the city, somebody coming here, building a brand-new building to how this growing operation seems more economical, just a retrofitted existing building. Does that building exist in town?
It doesn't, it doesn't. It's already here, there's a couple sites in town that are perfect, and they will be targeted, but I will also think that probably the utilities should be upfront, have a good sense of themselves, you know? At these events, things that are going on, make sure that the utility has a voice, and says, care of us. But, as Chris is saying, it is controversial, we are in a changing cycle, probably one response, you have some time, it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to be in the next 12 months, it's really with the light, sort of having people challenge, but there will be events that are going on in the interim, and I think that, you know, we should have a voice.
And so, but now, do they have an incentive for gas, too?
We don't have an incentive for gas, though, but we're competitive.
But their high uses of gas.
We have capacity, and their high uses of gas.
Okay.
Could have been a water, too.
Well, you know, I haven't really thought a lot about this, but municipal utility is obviously an advantage because of cost, but there's the distressed municipality requirement that the state is imposed, so, I mean, I said Wallingford, I mean, Wallingford's not a distressed municipality, even though they have a public utility. The folks in Norwalk aren't distressed, I don't think.
Jewett City, maybe?
Grotton, I don't think is a specifically stressed area. So, I mean, it's kind of interesting that you've got these two, these two filters, if you want to call it that, municipal utility with cheaper power and distressed designation, and it comes down to mostly us.
Yeah, we need to have a welcome wagon for these businesses, and that's where we got to start doing the education, to get engagement, to get involvement, and then, boom, we have everything aligned. And that's the next, you know, let's get, you know, the next two months, do, you start doing the education, and then be ready to open the doors up shortly after that.
All right. Certainly, the city syndrome shouldn't be a big issue, I mean, except that the issue itself of marijuana was that one issue, but if these facilities are, buildings are located in a special part, I don't think it's getting much in the way.
Big security, there's no in, there's no out, it's not like a bunch of, you know, these are very intelligent people growing these, you know, working these facilities. These are scientists and.
They have hundreds of ways typically.
Like, for example, in Wisconsin, the border of Wisconsin, probably about 100, 150 ways.
I mean, the reality is, there's people who don't like the idea of marijuana being in Norwich, or whatever. It's legal in Connecticut, it's going to go somewhere. So, I'm not sure the world is going to be different if it's in Jewett City than if it's a Norwich industrial park.
Yeah, I mean, we got 10 package stores, and, but we would prefer to have Budweiser be brewed in Norwich than out in, you know, St. Louis, or Meramek.
A grow facility and a dispensary are not the same facility.
That's exactly right. All righty, so, the next item on the agenda is to go into executive session, to discuss confidential, trade-secret, and commercially valuable confidential or proprietary information not subject to inspection or public disclosure pursuant to Section 1, 210, 5, and 7, 232A of the Connecticut general statutes.
All right, so, the question is, is, well, we're going to get the list of the utility projects, and the list of opportunities that have been provided by Aiken Gump, to all the members, and when do we want to meet next? One week, two weeks out? What's your preference from the board?
I would prefer two weeks out, because that way it gives us a little bit more time to, you know, kind of go through some things and have some, you know, some good questions. I mean, I don't mind a week if it really works, but I just want everyone to be able to have the opportunity to do the due diligence, to see, you know, what's feasible for us to take our first step. So, I prefer two weeks.
All right, two weeks is the week of the board meeting.
Okay.
So, that doesn't work.
Well, no, we could do a Monday meeting and a Tuesday meeting, or.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, want to shoot from Monday the 27th?
Not 1 o'clock?
Yes.
Well, Sean, you have a class at 1 o'clock, could, would it be better to have, maybe do it at 2?
Yeah, for me, personally, if you can make the adjustment for 2 o'clock, life would be much easier for me.
Bill, does that work for you and your daughter? So, 2 PM, Monday the 27th.
Yes.
And let's think about, do we want to have Aiken Gump on the line for that meeting? Or do we want to make that sort of a brainstorm session, and then talk to Aiken Gump at the third meeting, when we say, listen, we've got seven things that we're kind of interested in, what are your thoughts on those seven things?
I think that personally, who was that? Who was that? Who just spoke?
That was Bob.
Rob?
Bob.
Oh, Bob, sorry, Bob. Bob, I think that they should be present at every meeting, because, you know, give us a little bit of clarification, if we need to ask any questions, and then, secondly, you know, when we come back, you know, we can say, okay, these are the several projects that we chose. So, I just think for the first couple sessions, they need to handhold us, kind of baby us a little bit, you know, and kind of line us and dine us, you know, in a thesis where a little bit more detail, so that we don't have to always, you know, think on our own. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, I mean, we got, for the first couple meetings, that might be fine, I mean.
Yeah, just the first couple, just so we can, so we can move forward and let them do what they need to do, just from a comfortability perspective.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean, we have to recognize the meter's going to be running with Aiken Gump, so. So, one thing I might suggest, and this might, you know, take control of it, I can go either way, is, we get together, we look at what they say are opportunities, Devin Hick looked at as well, we come together, this group here, next meeting, and then we just kind of pair, and here, you know, here are the things we want to work on, get that off to Susan Link, and say, is there a match here? And then we have her at the next meeting.
That'd be fine.
Would that make sense?
Yeah, that's, I'm in terms of discovery, Rob. You know, that's kind of like, yeah. All right, that sounds good.
All right, so.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, we'll meet Monday the 27th, we'll have Devin here in this group here, we'll have Chris Riley give us an update on Aiken Gump as well, if there's any updates from there, and then we'll invite Aiken Gump to the meeting, which will decide to be the week or two weeks after the board meeting. All right, that sounds good. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Sean first, and Bill second, all those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All right.
And now that we're adjourned, Ashan, how are you making out with your business?
Yeah, thank you for asking. It just came last week, it's more of a technicality, maybe, it could be covered, but I'm not sure.